I'd like to welcome you all to the Tuesday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're glad to have so many people with us here this morning and also tuning in online at this time. I'd like to call forward for invocation, David Clements. He's a chaplain with our sheriff's office and our, and if you'll please stand, and our pledges will be led by Judge Beadle. I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones.
Thank you, Judge. Let's pray. Lord God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the beautiful weather that you have blessed us with this week. We thank you for your, the richness of your mercy and abounding, and abounding love toward the people of Denton County. Lord, we lift up the people of Denton County today. Be their refuge and strength, the ever-present help in the time of trouble. We pray for all the community leaders, pastors, law enforcement, all the county employees as they serve this great community. Bless them and keep them safe. May, may your face shine upon them and be gracious to them. Lord, we thank you for the university group of kids who, who have volunteered to serve and volunteer for their communities. We thank you as they're honored today, Father. I thank you. We continue to bless them in all their endeavors. Lord, we lift up the Commissioners' Court before you today, asking you for wisdom and guidance as they make difficult decisions. May they be guided by your truth and justice, and may your peace that surpasses all understanding guide every decision. May your goodness continue to cover the people of Denton County. We thank you for, as, as the leaders make these, these decisions, that they, it would lead to peaceful lives for the residents and the community. We pray for all of our soldiers from Denton County who are deployed overseas. Lord, we bless, bless Denton County. Lord, we bless the great state of Texas, and Lord, we bless America. We thank you. We pray all these things. In Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, please join me for the pledge of the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank y'all both very much. All right, we have lots of people on the agenda this morning, and so what we're going to do is try to get everybody in and out of here as soon as possible. So I appreciate y'all's indulgence. So we will be going a little bit out of order so we can utilize everyone's time efficiently. Let's go to item one, which was for public input for items not listed on the agenda, and we have one registered speaker for item one. So let's call up Mr. Ernest Leinberger. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you.
And I will remind you, you have three minutes. Once you begin speaking, sir.
Yes, sir.
No problem.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Thank you so much, Judge Eads and Commissioners. I am Ernest Leinberger, resident of Denton County, as you know, and a veteran, a retired naval officer specialized in nuclear power and surface warfare, and a twenty-nine-year employee of Texas Instruments. But now I am your Democratic candidate for a seat in the U.S. House of Representatives, and I have been following your actions with appreciation and, and for you and all your good works, for your care for the community. It's all very much appreciated, and, but I did want to reassure you that I am continuing my campaign from two thousand and twenty-four through to the two thousand and twenty-six election to continue to put people's needs first as the Democratic candidate for a seat in the U.S. House of Representatives for this district, twenty-six. I do need to say that I disagree strongly with the current national administration on their tariffs, on their military action, on their disregard for human needs and working class problems. I will work to end executive overreach and restore strong government services for the people, including veteran, economic fairness, and health care. I salute your agenda item fourteen A, Social Services Agreements with CCA, the Christian Community Action, and PD Place and SPAN, of which I am a member of the board, so I get to see firsthand the good work that we get to do in the community there. These are powerful examples of your organization putting people's needs first, and I want to stand here and highly show my appreciation for you for bringing these forward. So again, I'm Ernest Leinberger, your Democratic candidate for a seat in the United States House of Representatives for Congressional District Twenty-Six. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time and for your spirit of appreciation. All right. Next, let's go to, we've got several judges with us this morning, and I would like to get them back to their courtroom. They may have trials awaiting them. Let's go to item thirteen B. Judge Beadle is here with us. If you want to come forward, approval of a request to accept grant funds in amount one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six Specialty Courts Grant Program. This is the Veterans Treatments Court in any appropriate action. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm joined here today with Ms. Tammy Russell, my program manager, who's also the grant writer for this grant.
Well, she did a good job, obviously.
She did a wonderful job, and I want to recognize her, but also recognize the efforts of this Commissioners' Court and our Veterans Court program as a whole. This money will go directly to funding counseling, monitoring of the veterans while they're in the program, and other associated costs with their, their care while we work through this Problem Solving Court and this Treatment Court program. So I would highly encourage the judge and the Commissioners here today to approve this grant. This is, what, the twelfth?
Twelve.
Twelfth governor's grant that we received from Austin, from the governor's office, and we will put this money to good use as we have for the previous eleven years of this program.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. Members, do you have any questions?
Nope. Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Judge, I want to thank you and your team for everything you do, and, and I'm glad that we were able to, to have this wonderful program as people get their life back together after their service to the country. So any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all.
Thank you both.
Appreciate it.
We have several of these. And next is item thirteen C. Do we have Judge Shanklin or Breeding with us this morning? If they're, okay, there you are. Good morning, sir. Let's go to item thirteen C, approval of a request to accept grant funds in amount of two hundred and two thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six Specialty Courts Grant Program. This is the Drug Treatment Court in any appropriate action. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. I want to echo the sentiments of Judge Beadle, and thank you so much for your support throughout the years for our drug court. I know these specialty courts-
Judge, if you'll speak into that mic just a little bit. There we go.
I know the specialty courts can be a drain sometimes with as many asks as we have, and we're so fortunate to be able to receive not only the state grant that we have, but also the federal grants that we've received. This is my court administrator, Kevin Edwards, and this is Haley. She is one of our grant writers that we have, and so we could not do any of this without, without their help and participation. So I'm just here this morning to say thank you and, and ask for approval for this grant because with all the good things that we do, it comes with a price tag, and we would sure like approval of this grant, and we thank you.
Absolutely. Very good. All right. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Well, thank y'all for what you do. Again, the Drug Treatment Court, it's great to go over there to see your graduations and how y'all actually turn people's lives around. It's not just about punishment, it's about them paying penance and, and improving their lives. So thank y'all.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, folks.
Any other comments? We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen D. Is Judge Jones with us today?
Yep, there she is.
Oh, yes. There she is. Good morning. Next is thirteen D, approval of a request to accept grant funds in amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, forty-six dollars from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six Specialty Courts Program. This is the Family Drug Treatment Court in any appropriate action. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. And I want to say thank you for having us here this morning.
Yes, ma'am.
The drive of the Family Drug Treatment Court is mentally tasking, but with financial support, it'll make it a lot easier. And I want to recognize Kevin Edwards, our grant writer this morning, and our family, our community, our kids, and my staff of the four sixty-seven court. We are family.
That's right.
Judge Shanklin said, did you have to bring so many people? Of course. It's Family Drug Court.
Yes.
You know, so here we are.
Well, they need to get out of the other courtroom and come see this one, so.
So we ask that you approve the grant for the court.
Well, thank y'all. And Judge, you're exactly right. It is a family business, and I appreciate what y'all do to help, help process people through the criminal justice system and help turn their life around. So do we have a motion for approval?
Approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
See you, ladies.
All right. Next is Judge Waddell. Under thirteen E is approval of a request to accept grant, grant funds in amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and seven dollars from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six Specialty Courts Grant Program, DWI Treatment Court. Any appropriate action. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge and Commissioners. We want to thank you for your support as well. I think Judge Beadle mentioned to me, this is the first time the governor's office has funded, has offered a grant to each one of these specialty courts.
That's right.
We do great work in the county. We keep families together and keep people productive, and we certainly appreciate your time. This is Trace Remington. He is the program manager and the probation officer for the DWI Treatment Court. We currently have twenty-eight people in this program. This, the funds that we receive from the governor's office will help us make sure that we're doing good monitoring and providing good services for the people that are in the program.
Perfect. Very good.
Move approval.
Well, thank y'all for what, thank y'all for what you do. Do we have a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Well, again, thanks for what y'all do.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm glad we have over, just right at a million dollars in, in, in grant funds this morning that we're able to accept and help offset some of our local costs. So we have a motion, a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Judge, are you the next one as well? Or who's, let me see here. Who's a thirteen F, approval of a request to accept grant funds in amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, eighty-seven dollars from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six Specialty Courts Grant Program, Mental Health Treatment Court. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge.
And any appropriate action. Go right ahead.
So I apologize, but the two judges for the mental health court were not able to make it this morning. It's Judge Lee Ann Breeding and Judge Lori Ragland. So I'm here on, on their behalf to request that you accept this grant for us, so that way we can continue serving the mental health population of Denton County that are justice involved.
Perfect. Good. Well, thank you for what you, we have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Well, thank y'all for what you're doing. I know y'all have been busy going through the grant application process, and now you're going to be going through the grant adminis, administration process. So we appreciate all y'all's efforts in doing that.
Thanks so much.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
All right. Now, let's go to, I'm going to, let me, I'm going to go right here to our check presentations.
Good.
What item was that, Holly? Let me see here. Just a second. The number was the, here we go. Let's go to fourteen A. And y'all say, if we have any representatives from these agencies here, y'all would love to have y'all come up and you will speak about your agency. We'd love to let the public know more about you. Item fourteen A is approval of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six Social Services Agreements between Denton County, Texas, and One Christian Community Action, also known as CCA, number two, PD Place, and three, SPAN. So if our guests from CCA, PD Place, and SPAN will come forward, the chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All right. Well, good morning.
Morning, folks.
Are we ready?
Nice.
Good morning.
Hey, Larry. How are y'all?
I'm doing good.
Good morning. Go right ahead.
All righty. My name is Daphne Houston. I'm the Director of Programs at CCA, and we are just so grateful that you all are giving us this grant this morning. This allows us to continue to help people with our supportive services, our professional counseling, and our career services, just to get people back on their feet. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Next is PD Place.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for the county's support for PD Place's work. As a reminder, PD Place provides primary health care to, primary pediatric health care to just under six thousand, six thousand kids who live throughout North Texas. About ninety percent of those live in Denton County, and we will use these funds to provide care for kids when they're sick, preventive care, and mental health services as well. We are challenged. The acuity rate of patients coming through PD Place is much greater. We continue to face significant mental, mental health needs of, of the kids that we're seeing. And one statistical fact that we have been highlighting throughout the year is that our data shows that just under a third of the patients that we see come from families that report food insecurity. So our partnerships with other local organizations that are helping to provide nutrition and food services helps keeps kids healthy, and we are grateful for everyone's support in that regard.
Thank you. Perfect. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, judgies. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for all your support for SPAN, Meals on Wheels of Denton County. We've been around fifty-one years serving the community, and our, the need for our programs is just continuing to grow, of course, as the county is continuing to grow. Our Meals on Wheels program, a lot of people are familiar with it, but we support homebound seniors throughout the community, delivering a hot nutritious meal Monday through Friday, and a caring visit from the volunteer. I look at the meal as a ticket in the door to make sure that senior knows they are connected to our community. And that caring visit is equally important to the meal, if not more, because loneliness is even more a concern than the lack of nutrition. So we're very proud of what we do, and we want to continue to serve, and we can't do it alone. So help from the county over all these years has allowed us to continue to serve, and we thank you for your support. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do. All right. Any other comments before we take the vote?
That's great. That's great work.
Well, I just want to thank each and every one of the staff members and the volunteers and the donors that make the magic happen at Christian Community Action, PD Place, and SPAN. I would just encourage the public, or anyone watching this meeting, that at, at this holiday season, you know, this time of year, if you feel so led to, to be a blessing to others, these three organizations are, definitely have our Denton County Seal of Approval, and they were great partners for us. And so if you would like to, to help others here locally, these are locally, these are local nonprofits that help right here in Denton County and do great work, and they're funded through support here in, within the county, and so we appreciate what y'all do. So thank y'all. All right. Any, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So let's give them all a big hand. [applause]
Excuse me. I'm so sorry.
No, go ahead.
Thank you.
Three. Two. One, two, and three. Perfect.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
John, this is CCA.
How cool.
See you.
All right.
Daphne, you want me to do that?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
PD Place next.
PD Place.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
One, two, and three. Perfect.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I have several? So one, two, three.
One more.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir.
I knew it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those people do great work. All right. We're going to go to three A, which is approval
of a resolution recognizing Kevin Mullis' retirement. And Kevin, if you'll come forward. Good morning. Well, we're glad to have you here. Thank you for your years of service to the county. So I'll, I'll read this resolution, make some comments, and I promise you'll get the last word. Okay? Sound good? All right. So this is a resolution honoring Kevin Mullis for twenty-four years of service to Denton County. The Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the eighteenth day of November two thousand and twenty-five, consider the following resolution. Rest Kevin Mullis has been a loyal employee of the Denton County Juvenile Probation Department since May the twenty-third, two thousand and one, and will retire on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, after twenty-four years of service. And whereas Kevin began his career as a juvenile supervision officer in the post-adjudication secure correctional facility, as a juvenile supervision officer, Kevin provided supervision of detained youth until he transferred to the Denton County Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program in October two thousand and two, where he served as a drill instructor for four years. While serving as a drill instructor, Kevin continued his education, and in December two thousand and six, he earned a Bachelor of Applied Arts and Sciences degree from the University of North Texas. Four years later, Kevin was selected for promotion to a juvenile probation officer position at the department's nearest location. Kevin has continued in this position, faithfully serving the juvenile probation department and the citizens of Denton County for the last eighteen years. Whereas Kevin has consistently demonstrated and devoted utmost care and concern for the betterment of juveniles and families who encountered the Denton County Juvenile Probation Department, he has earned the respect of his peers, supervisors, and juvenile justice professionals in the state of Texas. Kevin has been a dedicated employee whose professionalism and attention to detail have helped make a difference for the families he has served, along with his coworkers who surrounded him. Whereas Kevin has been a consistent, positive role model for the juveniles and their families, as well as other employees. Kevin has been an excellent team member and has helped many new juvenile probation officers learn their specific job duties, which are unique to the role of a probation officer. Kevin plans to spend time with his family, continue to serve his community during his retirement. And whereas the juvenile probation department would like to thank Kevin for his many years of service and contributions to the department, and we wish him well in his retirement. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Kevin Mullis our sincere and grateful appreciation for his service to Denton County. We congratulate Kevin on his well-earned retirement and extend our best wishes to him for continuous success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court this eighteenth day of November two thousand and twenty-five upon a motion by the chair.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Well, we want to thank you for your service to the county. You know, I think individuals and Denton County employees that get an opportunity to work with our youth that are going through this system help change the trajectory of their life and, and for their, their kids and their grandkids. And I know that as you spoken to their life and helped them be a positive role model, you helped, helped change their individual life and, and those of many others. So I want to thank you for being a change maker here in Denton County. I really do. Would you like to say something as well?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners.
Whereas Kevin has been a consistent positive role model for the juveniles and their families, as well as other employees. Kevin has been an excellent team member and has helped many new juvenile probation officers learn their specific job duties, which are unique to the role of a probation officer. Kevin plans to spend time with his family, continue to serve his community during his retirement. And whereas the juvenile probation department would like to thank Kevin for his many years of service and contributions to the department, and we wish him well in his retirement. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Kevin Mullis our sincere and grateful appreciation for his service to Denton County. We congratulate Kevin on his well-earned retirement and extend our best wishes to him for continuous success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court this 18th day of November, 2025, upon a motion by the chair.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Well, we want to thank you for your service to the county. You know, I think individuals and Denton County employees that get an opportunity to work with our youth that are going through this system help change the trajectory of their life and, and for their, their kids and their grandkids. And I know that as you've spoken to their life and helped them be a positive role model, you helped, helped change their individual life and, and those of many others. So I want to thank you for being a changemaker here in Denton County. I really do. Would you like to say something as well?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioner, Commissioners and Judge. Just wanted to take a moment to, to just publicly acknowledge Kevin for all the hard work that he's put in for our department. And again, the lives that he's touched, the officers that he's mentored. We will miss him, but we do wish him well. So on behalf of Matt Merrick and, and our department, congratulations, Kevin.
Thank you.
Great.
Gentlemen, would you like to say anything? I promise him he gets the last word.
Right. Obviously greatly appreciate all the years of work for the Denton County and the citizens within Denton County. Because I guarantee you've touched a lot of, of young adults and, and I know it's not always, it's very, it's a big challenge. And it's not always easy because they don't always go the direction still. And you'll do a great job while they're there and then they get out back into the, with the society that unfortunately has occurred in some places and, and they, they turn back and you see them again. But again, thank you so much for the years. That, that's, that takes a lot to put that many amount of years into that registry. So thank you so much for your time, sir.
Yeah. I just echo those. It's, it's great. It's, it's, it's hard work, but we appreciate that you've done that for so long. And I hope you have some great plans.
We're a little too young to have too many plans.
Yeah, that's right.
It's all yours. Go right ahead. We're glad to have you here.
Well, I didn't want to forget something, so I wrote something. Now that I look at it, it looks pretty long, so I apologize.
You have all, you've been here 24 years. You have as much time as you need.
That's right.
All right. Judge Eats, Commissioners, as I stand here today, I'm filled with gratitude, nostalgia, and a sense of amazement that this moment has finally arrived. After 24 years of service, it's time to turn the page and bring a new chapter. I want to take a moment to reflect on the journey that brought me here. I grew up in a small town in Iowa, where life was a little quieter and a lot less traffic. Moving to Denton County, Texas, was a big leap, one filled with uncertainty and hope. But I've always liked an adventure. I wasn't alone. My wife, Amy, and son Cole were right there with me. Looking back now, I realize how lucky we were that we'd land where we did. This community has welcomed us with open arms. And this workplace became more than just a job, it became a second home.
Yeah.
Okay. I remember early on while working at Post and JJ, watching the juvenile probation officers coming and going from court and case staffings. There was something about their presence, their purpose, their camaraderie that really stuck with me. It seemed like a family. I knew I wanted to be part of that family to contribute the same way that they did. One of the things I'm really grateful for is the county's tuition reimbursement program. Thanks to that support, I was able to continue my college education while working full-time. It wasn't easy, but knowing that Amy and Cole, my coworkers, believed in me was, made all the difference. That opportunity helped me shape my career and opened the door to become part of the juvenile probation family. Working with juveniles and their families wasn't always easy. There were tough conversations, emotional moments, and situations that challenged me deeply. But these experiences also taught me patience, empathy, and the importance of showing up with compassion, even when it's hard. I learned that behind every case file is a family trying to find their way and being part of that journey was both humbling and rewarding. I've been fortunate to work alongside some of the most dedicated, talented, and kind-hearted people I have ever met. The friendships and challenges, the laughter, and even the tough times have shaped my experience and left a lasting impression. Thank you all for your support, camaraderie, and incredible memories. I'll miss you all more than words can say.
All right. Well, thank you. That was very well put. Anyway, thank you again. Thank you, thank you. Don't be a stranger. Come back and see us. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. Let's give them a big hand, everybody.
All right. I'd like the folks from the department to come down and we'll take a big group picture of the family all together.
Rob Brown, don't be hating up back there.
Right. One, two, and three.
You know, I would tell you, we've been doing these, these retirement resolutions for a long time and there's a common theme regardless of the department, is that the county's very much a family atmosphere and it's always good to hear, isn't it, guys? It's always good to hear. Okay, let's go to 3B. We have lots of guests in matching shirts this morning, so we want to get them down. If y'all come down and we'll, y'all gather up down here. Y'all come as a group. We'd love to have y'all. 3B is approval of a proclamation recognizing ASEZ, which is Save the Earth from A to Z, and their volunteers and any appropriate action. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
We're glad to have y'all here. So go right ahead. We'd love to hear from you and I'll read this, this proclamation.
Yes. Thank you so much for having us, Judge Eats. We are very thankful that you allowed us to come here and receive this countywide proclamation. Just a little bit about the one who you're giving the proclamation to. Worldwide, we're known as ASZ, which again stands for Saving the World from A to Z. And we have four core pillars that we truly attend to. It is crime reduction, climate change response, community service, and disaster relief. There are many more things we focus on, but these are the four that we mainly focus on. And we have even, we are noticed in 175 countries with 154 memorandums with, from multiple institutions. This is us worldwide, but we brought it to a local scale here in the city of Denton.
Good.
So this past Sunday, we held a cleanup in Quicker Town Park, which we had 40 members attend, two VIPs, including our own Mayor Hutzbeth. And also we picked up 40 bags of trash, 20 bags of trash, may I go? So these things were brought locally. But the main thing that we really want to bring here is actually the love of a mother. Because this is the main love that we see throughout the world. There's no amount of sacrifice that can compare it to the love of a mother. Many things, from children to elderly adults, we bring that love and we bring that community and a sense of belonging. This is what we want to bring to locally here in Denton as well. So not only the cleanup, but also we want to have many other things to be done here in the city of Denton as well.
Wonderful. Well, I'm proud of y'all. First of all, I want to say thank y'all. Thank y'all for helping to, to clean up the city park. And I know that's just one of many things that you're gonna do here locally and around the world, you know? And so I, I appreciate y'all being civically minded as young adults, being civically minded and, and and looking around and seeing a need and finding the need and rolling up your sleeves and actually taking some action. But a lot of people talk about stuff or post about it or whatever, but they don't, they don't actually do the, do the hard work. They don't do the work. And so it takes putting your faith in action, right? And so I appreciate what y'all, what y'all are doing. So thank you. We need more, more good kids like y'all. So I appreciate. Are students at the University of North Texas, correct?
Yes.
That is great. All right. Gentlemen, do you want to make any comments before I read it?
That's excellent. It's wonderful what you guys are doing.
All right. Yes. So this is a court, I've got a whole list of projects for y'all, by the way. So I'm just, just
Perfect. We'd love to hear that.
Be sure to leave your number over here.
Yeah.
I'm not kidding. All right. This is a court proclamation recognizing ASZ, which is Save the Earth from A to Z. And whereas ASZ, Save the Earth from A to Z, the university student volunteer group of the World Mission Society Church of God, promotes volunteerism, environmental protection, and social well-being in alignment with sustainable development goals. And whereas ASZ students from the University of North Texas through their registered student organization, the Truth Bible Study Group, Bible Study Club actively serve the community through sustainability and civic engagement projects and inspired by their participation in the 2025 High Level Political Forum and Global Plastic Reduction Forum. And whereas on November the 9th, 2025, the ASZ volunteers across multiple Texas cities, including Denton, hosted the ASZ United Cleanup to Foster Environmental Stewardship, Community Pride, and Youth-led Leadership for a Cleaner and More Sustainable Future. And whereas ASZ's efforts and volunteer service are a vital expression of civic responsibility and compassion, demonstrating that collective effort can bring about lasting positive change. And now therefore be it resolved that the Denton County Commissioners Court commends ASZ's volunteers for their dedication, leadership commitment, and service to a, to creating a cleaner, healthier Denton County. Done in open court this 18th day of November, 2025, upon a motion by the chair.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any closing comments, gentlemen? All right. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So congratulations and thank y'all. All right. Let's just go to item 3C, which is approval of proclamations recognizing the first responders from the city of the colony for their contributions to the Hill Country Flood Task Force efforts. And I'm gonna, we have multiple here, but I'm gonna read one as an example. And Commissioner Falconer will be presenting these to the, to the individuals later this evening, correct?
Right. This evening I'll be presenting it.
So this is, I'm gonna, this is a court proclamation recognizing Justin, Justin Marriott and Matthew Sapp from the colony, from the city of the colony fire department for their contributions to the Hill Country Flood Task Force efforts. And whereas on July the 2nd, 2025, catastrophic flash flooding devastated central Texas, particularly along the Guadalupe River, following intense rainfall fueled by remnants of tropical storm Barry and Pacific moisture, resulting in widespread property damage, injuries, and tragic loss of life. And whereas in response to this disaster, Governor Greg Abbott issued a disaster declaration on July 4, 2025, and mobilized state resources to support search and rescue efforts. And whereas Texas Task Force Two Urban Search and Rescue, one of two state-designated urban search and rescue teams responded immediately. And TXTF Two plays a vital role in disaster response by deploying highly-trained personnel and specialized equipment to locate, extricate, and provide immediate medical care to victims of natural and man-made disasters responded to immediately. And whereas membership in the Texas Task Force Two requires rigorous qualifications, including a formal application and extensive training, highlighting the elite nature of this unit. And whereas Justin Marriott and Matthew Sapp of the Colony Fire Department deployed immediately to the Hill Country Flooding, serving as a rescue specialist in search, rescue, and recovery operations for more than two weeks. And, and whereas all the first responders selflessly serve the public during emergencies and are integral to every community in Denton County across the state of Texas and the United States showcasing their bravery, courage, and dedication when risking their safety and the execution of their duties to protect our communities. And whereas the courageous efforts of Justin Marriott and Matthew Sapp during the Hill Country Flood Disaster exemplify the resilience and unity that makes our country and our county, Denton County, strong. Now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court hereby recognizes and honors Justin Marriott and Matthew Sapp of the Colony Fire Department for their service during the Hill Country Flood Response and call upon all citizens to recognize and honor them in this same. Done in open court this 18th day of November, 2025, upon a motion made by
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. So I, I'm proud that we are able to honor the colony with this. But it is, it is, it was a statewide, quite frankly, a countrywide effort. We all remember that. And it was horrific what happened, but there was, it was so good to see so many heroes come to the aid of that area and, and including Denton County, where we had emergency services who did the same. And I think, you know, I think we all saw some of the, the, the stuff that they had to, had to do in that whole process. The colony has actually had a campaign of tying green ribbons around the city to remember those who lost loved ones in that tragedy. And that's why I'm wearing green today. So because I want to, I'll be there this evening at the colony's city council meeting to present these. But it's a, it's a great effort by many people to, to try to help in such a horrific situation. Thank you.
Well, it does, it was a, it was a wonderful response. Although it's tragic that it had to happen, but it was a, I'm very proud of everyone. The training that it takes to, to be prepared to respond. And one of the things that I'm most pleased about is not only our Denton County personnel, but the personnel from the agencies within Denton County that responded, that responded. And it's one of the thanks our friends from the colony who went and did just that. So. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So thank you, and you will get those executed and you can take those tonight. Next, we have a public hearing. Next is 4A, a public hearing to consider the installation and enforcement of no parking signs on Gardenia Boulevard between East University, US 380, and Spanish Mall Drive in the Savannah subdivision within Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 10, now known as Elm Ridge Water Control and Improvement District in Denton County. This is in Commissioner Precinct 1. And do we, we have a motion, do we have a motion to open a public hearing? Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So we are in a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the installation enforcement of no parking signs? I do believe we have two individuals that have registered, so we'll go ahead and hear from Mr. David Brown. Good morning, sir. Thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and to give you some firsthand information on the situation that we have. An overflow problem, problem from a strip mall that has been directed over into our housing development, specifically on Gardenia. Gardenia is a boulevard. It's 16 point, or it's 16 feet, nine inches wide each lane. And if you take a seven-foot wide car, plus a variance of, I think cars are supposed to stay within 12 inches of the curb. That doesn't leave much room for fire or emergency vehicles. So, and I do have two pictures that if, if you would like to see, if you would allow me to show you off my phone
Sure.
of the situation that exists.
Yes, sir.
And it's a safety issue and that's what we are concerned about changing. So if you don't mind.
Sure. Yes, sir.
I really appreciate this. May I approach?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Go ahead. I've, I've, I've seen majority of this stuff. Obviously it's in the precinct I'm responsible for and, and I've, I've, I've seen majority of this stuff. Obviously, it's in the precinct I'm responsible for and, and Capricha's been working with, and my office has been working with the citizens there. And it's obviously an issue, and, and that's why it's on the agenda, and we're happy to be addressing it today. Yeah, it does.
That's all right. You know I'm encouraged about the young people.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice.
It is always good. That's right.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I'm, I'm, I'm good. I'm sure that it's a, it's a problem.
This is the left, or the right turn lane on the three eighty.
And that's not.
Right, that's not a park.
Yeah.
That's a right turn lane.
That's where they're parking.
And that's parked, that's parked cars.
Yes, sir.
That's not, that's not cars lined up to turn.
How many cars can park in a left, in a right turn lane? It's seven.
Yes, there you go.
No, I, I'm very well aware of it, unfortunately.
I appreciate.
Yeah. We appreciate you coming and being a concern.
Did you have any closing comments before I welcome up our next?
I just appreciate you allowing me to come, and you're aware of the situation.
Perfect.
And it's a safety issue.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Safety is important. Next is Jennifer Bland.
Well, that, I just, I just. I just had a question. So these are, are, are no parking at any time, or is?
Right.
Okay. And, and of course, the, the thing, I assume that everyone is, that, that, that means that visitors and others can't park either.
Correct.
Which is the.
Correct.
Struggle that we've had with other issues, right? But I want to make sure everybody's aware.
Thank you for your time today, Judge, Commissioners. And that's what, I'm just here to answer any questions such as that. So it doesn't show well on the map, but where Gardenia comes off of three eighty, there are no houses that actually face that area. That would be a side boulevard. So when residents have visitors, they normally park in front of those homes on the other side streets.
I see.
So that's why we didn't include that in the request, because then residents would not be able to have birthday parties, visitors, Thanksgiving, parking. However, for that main boulevard coming in off of three eighty, it really is a safety issue.
Right, got it.
So how long is that, that main area that would be blocked?
Strip area?
Few hundred feet, probably.
So it'd just be that piece, which is the no parking, and there's no houses that directly?
Right, it doesn't impact the home.
Correct.
Okay, that's a great point, Jennifer. Thank you.
That's the thing that always.
We obviously looked at that to make sure that.
Did you have any other additional information?
I just wanted to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your time. We appreciate you.
Thank you for being here, for being a resource. Do we have any other, is there anyone else in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the installation of the no parking signs that are in attendance? Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Steve Fainer, I'm a member of the Safety Committee in Savannah.
Perfect.
And we brought this up. It's great to see the system work.
Yeah.
We brought this up.
Well, thank you for being here.
Yeah. Thank you for having this. And again, it's gotten to this level. We started at the Safety Committee. We have representatives from Elm Ridge Police Department show up at every meeting and go over with us things we can do to help improve safety within Savannah. This item came up. The police department was, had their hands tied with different things, and we understand that. So it went then from us to the police department, to the Elm Ridge Board of Directors, and it has now progressed to this level. And that's what it takes in an organization. We're a very small community. Built in two thousand and three, there was nothing but cows and cotton fields. And this little roadway is a divided roadway, so you've got a very minimal amount of room on each side. And it goes, let me just share this picture real quick. Oh, pause. So if that's covered during that divided area with no parking, it allows all of the emergency vehicles to get through that need to.
Perfect.
Again, I want to thank your attention to this, the fact that it starts with neighbors getting together, a safety committee, a fire, I mean, a police department, Elm Ridge, and all the way up to Denton County. Thank you very much.
Perfect. And sir, would you state your name for the record? I didn't get a form for you.
Name, Stephen Fainer, F O E H N E R.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. All right, do we have anyone else in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the proposed action? Hearing done. Do we have a motion to close a public hearing?
Move to close.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I want to move to approve.
We have a motion for approval, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, folks. I want to thank all the folks, and I want to thank Capricha, my office, for helping get this all accomplished as well. So, great job. Thank you.
It's good to see a problem solved.
Yep, it is. Occasionally, we can get something done right there off of three eighty.
There we go.
Okay, let me see what else I've got special here. All right, we're gonna go back to the beginning.
Back to the beginning.
Back to the beginning, huh?
Back to the beginning.
Unfortunately, there's still a whole lot.
I know. We got all of our, I think we got our guests taking care of it. All right, let's go to item two, which is our consent agenda. Members, are there any items? Try to pull up the consent agenda. We have a motion for approval as presented. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, our consent agenda today is item two A, approval of order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item two B is approval of payroll. Item two C is approval of budgeting request two zero two six one zero one for the Public Facilities Department to transfer ten thousand dollars from Facilities Management, Maintenance Management to Cornell Building Janitorial Service to provide additional funding for the janitorial service for eighteen oh eight Cornell per the lease agreement. Item two D is approval of October twenty twenty five Road Superintendent Report. This is presented for recording purposes only. Next is item five A, approval of bill report payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forebiture, and VIT Interest, VIT Interest and DA Forebiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner, we have a second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item six A, approval of specifications and authority to advertise for ITB two five two eight seven nine. This is elections, moving services. The chair move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval of the report on proceeds from the online surplus auction two five two eight seven two held in September and October of twenty twenty five.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six C, approval to exempt from bidding the sales source purchases of geographical information services software and services through the Environmental Systems Research Institute. And this is ESRI, and to renew the small government enterprise agreement with ESRI in amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand seventy-five dollars for the duration of the agreement.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six D, approval of specifications for RF SQ two five two eight eight four. This is design services for fire station and fire administration building and the appointment evaluation committee to include Brad Sebastian, Chief Fire Marshal Sheldon Gilbert, Assistant Chief Fire Rescue Division, Fire Marshal Jared Harwell, Division Manager Planning Development Services, Chris Lansey, Construction Coordinator, Construction Management, and Eric Gildersleep, Project Administrator, County Administration. And we would like to, I would like to move for approval and also add Commissioner Falconer to that committee.
Okay, perfect, second.
We have a second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six E, approval of specifications for RF SQ two five two eight nine two, design services for the Teasley Emergency Management Building Interiors Renovations and Appointment Evaluation Committee to include Brad Sebastian, Chief Fire Marshal Samantha Taylor, Director of Office of Emergency Management, Chris Masses, Facilities Division Manager Public Facilities, and Alec Zavandee, Construction Coordinator, Construction Management, and Any Appropriate Action. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six F, approval of the purchase of computers and related computer equipment as part two of Denton County's fiscal year twenty twenty six hardware refresh project from Dell Marketing LP in amount of three hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract DIR CPA five seven nine two.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six G, approval to purchase Verinus software platform from Alchemy Tech Group LLC in amount of six hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents over a three-year period through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract DIR CPA five six eight seven.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six H, approval of purchase of four Chevrolet Tahoe public pursuit vehicles, PPVs, and two Chevrolet Tahoe special services vehicles, SSVs, for the sheriff's office from Sames, Laredo, Chevrolet, and accompanying emergency vehicle equipment from Dana Safety Supplies, recommended by the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget to support newly approved positions. The estimated cost of the vehicles is three hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and ninety dollars with a purchase to be made through the TIPS Cooperative Contract two four zero nine zero one. And for the vehicle equipment, and for the vehicle equipment is one hundred ninety-eight thousand and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents with a purchase to be made through the buy board six nine eight two three for a total of five hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six I, approval to rescind quarter two five zero eight three one dated September the thirty of twenty twenty five for the award of ITB two five two eight eight one extermination services and approval of award to seed family premier services LLC, DBA Petmaster, Plano, and McKinney.
Move to approve. I have a comment.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Proceed, sir.
Thank you, Judge. I just wanted to point out that this was, the, this switching of vendors was really clearly just a miscommunication on the bid where there was a zero that we thought was a, a no bid. It turned out it was that they were giving it to us included with that. So this, there was nothing, there was no malfeasance or any, anything like that, right? This was just a, a, a miscommunication, and I'm glad that we're doing the right thing and getting it squared away.
Perfect, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six J, approval of specification authority to advertise for RAP two five two eight eight two psychiatric services for Denton County Statutory Probate Court and Appointment Evaluation Committee to include Matt Richardson, Health Department Director, Dave Jan, County Probate Judge, Byron Brown, Probate Court Attorney Administrator, and Colton Shepherd, Senior Paralegal Probate Court.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six K, approval of renewal of the Falcon Complete Endpoint Protection Bundle from Apollo Information Systems in amount of three hundred and eight thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-four cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract DIR CPA four eight six eight.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six L, approval of evaluation committee's recommendation to rank BKV Group as the most qualified firm for RF SQ two five two eight four nine design services for the Charlie J Cole Building in any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven A, report from miscellaneous equipment for software services is presented for recording purposes only. Seven B is approval of budgeting request two zero two six one one four for public health to increase revenues and allocate expenditures for the fiscal year twenty twenty six dot B, this case management program through the delivery system reform incentive payment, DSRIP program in the amount of five hundred and five thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven C, approval of budgeting request two zero two six one one six for the county jail to transfer one hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars from salary assistance to overtime cash option outside of the budget amendment and human resources policies as recommended by the Budget Office. Funds are needed to cover overtime paid for the month of October.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven D, approval of budgeting request two zero two six one two zero for the county jail to transfer one million five hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and seventy dollars from unappropriate contingency to various salary benefit spend categories to cover the cost of budgeting for the twenty full-time detention officer one positions for the remainder of the fiscal year. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Proceed, sir.
I just, thank you. I just, when I was talking to the sheriff, he mentioned that we were approaching seventy percent on that, which is why we need these positions. It's great. So, we're getting there.
Yep, as we're, we are closing the gap. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven E, approval of budgeting request two zero two six one two one for information technology to transfer seventy-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars from public safety and courts technology, technology software services to county-wide technology, technology software services to provide funding for the renewal of the InfoTech Research Service Agreement.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A, report from human resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hired with the three hundred and ninety-third district court, one promotion in the county auditor's office, one new hired in the county clerk, one new hired in the district attorney's office, one new hired in juvenile probation, one new hired in pre-male, eight new hires in the sheriff's office, seven of those are detention officer ones, one lateral transfer in the sheriff's office, and one new hired in the tax office. That's it for this one.
Perfect, thank you. Next is item nine A, this is approval of the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Contract HHS zero zero one four three nine five zero 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 seven, amendment number four between the Texas Department of State Health Services issues in Denton County for fiscal year twenty twenty six.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is nine B, approval of the clinical affiliation agreement between UNT Health and Denton County Public Health. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ten A, approval of the Mosley addition final platelots one block A. This is two point zero zero one acres located in Commissioner Precinct four. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ten B, approval of preliminary acceptance of the eighteen thirty police subdivision project in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we're gonna, thirteen A, we will pull, and that will be reposted. Let's proceed to thirteen G, consideration of approval of an order by the Denton County Commissioners Court approving the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six annual service plan update to the service and assessment plan and assessment roles for the public improvements within the major improvement area and improve, major area and improvement area number one of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen H, consideration of approval of an order by the Denton County Commissioners Court approving the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six annual service plan update for the service and assessment plan and assessment roles for the public improvement within the major improvement area and improvement area number one for the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen B, approval of memorandum of understanding between the Texas Division of Emergency Management in Denton County, Texas, where the Denton County Department of Emergency Management will participate in the Texas Emergency Management Assistance Teams Program. The chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go to fourteen C, approval of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six interlocal cooperation agreement, ICAs, for the library services between Denton County, Texas, the one, the Aubrey Area Library, two, the Betty Foster Public Library, three, the Flower Mound Public Library, four, the Crumb Public Library, five, the Little Elm Public Library, six, Pilot Point Community Library, seven, Sanger Public Library, eight, the Colony Public Library, any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen D, approval to submit the annual electronic reporting form in compliance with Senate Bill eighteen twelve, demonstrate that Denton County, Texas, authorization to exercise the power of eminent domain in Texas. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen E, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas, and then Tradition Municipal Utility District number two B of Denton County for the property tax assessment and collection as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen F, approval of the contract agreement between Denton County, Texas, and JR West Texas Concrete LLC for the construction of intersection improvements as State Highway one fourteen at Championships Parkway. This is the traffic signal ITB two five two eight. This is the traffic signal I T B two five two eight eight three with funding the amount not to exceed two million seven hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-five cents, including a contingency amount of sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and eleven cents to be funded from eight zero nine three C C nine zero two zero zero S C nine zero 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 four P R nine zero six five P R J C V one one six nine. Any appropriate actions? Chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen G, approval of interlocal agreement for community, for cooperative purchasing program and standard insurance company contract for voluntary employee benefits between the City of Dallas, Denton County, Texas, as a member of the Public Employee Benefits Cooperative of North Texas, the P E B C, and the P E B C members, Tarrant County, Dallas County, Parker County, North Texas, Toa Authority, and the designation of the Local Government Code two seven one point one oh two B one of the Denton County Purchase, the Purchase, Denton County Purchasing Director. It's a person to act under the direction of and on behalf of Denton County in all matters related to the program as requested by the Human Resource Department, approved by the Purchasing Director, and recommended by the P E B C of North Texas. The chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will pull fourteen H for future action. Let's go to fourteen I, approval of the updated additional information form for self-funded accounts, which form is attachment two of the Claim Administrator Business Associate Agreement by and between Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas, a division of the Healthcare Service Corporation, a mutual legal reserve company, the Claim Administrator, and Denton County, Texas, the Public Employee Benefits Cooperative of North Texas, the employer. And the employer on behalf of its group health plan, G H P, and any appropriate actions requested by the Denton County Human Resource Department, and recommendation to P E B C, the, the chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen J, approval of the purchase of a drain easement by Denton County, Texas, from Lime Rock Resources for a L P in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars plus closing costs for the acquisition of a drain easement consistent of four thousand two hundred and ninety-one square feet. This is zero point zero nine eight acres situated in the William Matthews survey abstract number eight ninety-one, Denton County, Texas, for the Jackson Road Improvement Project, which serves a public purpose with funding to come from Jackson Road Precinct four, auto line item eight nine seven four nine one, seven four two one nine zero five zero, and any appropriate action.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen K, approval of purchase of a temporary construction easement by Denton County, Texas, from Billy V Davis, as trustee of the Billy V Davis and Donna M. Davis Revocable Living Trust, in amount of two thousand five hundred dollars plus closing costs for the acquisition of a temporary construction easement, consists of seven hundred and fifty-one square feet. This is zero point zero one seven acres situated in the George Hallmark Survey, abstract number five sixteen, Denton County, Texas, for the Jackson Road Improvement, Jackson Road Improvement Project, which serves a public purpose with funding to come from Jackson Road Precinct four, auto line item eight nine seven four two one nine zero five zero, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen L, approval of acceptance of a conveyance of a specialty warranty deed by Big Sky Municipal Utility District of Denton County, Texas, as grantor, and Denton County, Texas, as grantee for a tract of land containing two point eight nine one acres of land, more or less situated in the Richard R. Chowell Survey, abstract number six six zero, Denton County, Texas, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen M, approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven Agreement for Fire Protection and Ambulance Services between Denton County, Texas, and the City of Aubrey Fire Department, two, the City of Denton Fire Department, three, the City of Oakwood Fire Department, four, the City of Roanoke Fire Department, five, the Town of Little Elm Fire Department.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen N, approval of interlocal, interlocal agreement between Denton County and the North Central Texas Trauma Regional Advisory Council to receive grant-funded equipment that will enhance regional and countywide capabilities to respond to massive fatality incidents during disaster response and recovery operations. The chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.